My voice is a little ho- hoarse this morning, so just have to bear with me. We'll call this committee the whole meeting to order at nine o'clock in the morning on Tuesday, the nineteenth of, of April twenty twenty-two. We have a pretty full agenda today, so we'll just start going right down the line here. First item is an appearance by Matt Reed with S E H. Matt, you wanna come on up? We're gonna move you kind of ahead, so you don't have to hang around. Britt, you wanna take over?
Thank you. Matt is here, number one, about the approval of the professional services agreement for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street project phase two feasibility study. But before he leaves, we're gonna talk about a couple other things. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, so, good morning, everybody. Thanks for moving me up, I appreciate that. Which would you like me to talk about first, Britt? All right, feasibility study, okay. So here we go again. Seems like we were just doing this, but, uh, for phase one. But it's that time already to start working on the next phase. We're not even done with the first phase yet, but these things take time to, to get them in the hopper. So, in order to move ahead with the chapter four twenty-nine, uh, process for special assessments on phase two, like we did on phase one, we need to start that process, so we can get moving and then ultimately hopefully get into the design of the project by the end of the summer and into construction of the next phase next spring of twenty twenty-three. So what you have in front of you is the agreement for professional services for us to... We have started this already, if you remember. We, a couple of years ago, we were looking at the project collectively as a whole, and we broke it in half. So we've got a lot of the information done already. But we need to go back through it, make sure everything's accurate, we've got a little bit to add to it. We wanna go back through all of the, the property ownership and the assessment role, to make sure the assessment role is accurate for the preliminary improvement hearing. And then we're gonna definitely have to revisit the costs, because those will have changed, unfortunately, in the wrong direction, I would imagine, um, from what we did a couple of years ago. And then in addition to that, there's, there's going to be, um, we've been pursuing a number of different funding opportunities, and there's going to be a fair amount of coordination here in the next few months with, um, the agencies and, and their representatives at the federal level to try to get all that solidified. So hopefully that'll, if nothing else, help offset some of the, the increasing material costs and maybe even go beyond that. So, uh, if anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer any questions you might have on that.
Matt, I have a couple of questions here. The feasibility, we'll get ahold of all the people that are in this nu- next phase, and we'll have a, um, get together with those individuals, probably at the new ITMEC, um, building, I would guess, because there's usually more than will fit in this room when we have those.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, how far in advance do you wanna do this?
Well, we're, um, if you take a peek at the, at the, be the second page of the agreement I put together, what I thought was a, a rough schedule here anyway, I, I would like to keep this thing moving. I would like to have those public meetings in June, if we could. Because by the time we do that, gets back to the council, the council makes some decisions based on any comments you might receive, based on cost, budget, things like that, it's gonna already be the middle of the summer, and, and then we've got a lot of work to do in preparation for getting the design work done. So, I, I would hope in June, Charlie, that we would have, have the meeting, so sometime in May, we're gonna have to notify people.
Okay, um, Britt, are we pretty much ready to go with notifications, or do we have to, uh, get our staff getting all those names together?
That's actually Matt's responsibility.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll help get that all together.
Okay, okay, okay. We used to do it both ways, so... All right, anybody have any questions? Steve?
Thank you. Um, just, I, I'm supportive and we'll be moving forward, I'm just curious about, are, is this what we got some federal funding for, or is that... Okay, cool, I just wanna make sure there's some money to start the project, so I will move that we approve, uh, the professional services agreement.
Hey, do I, do I hear support?
Support for discussion.
Okay, Julianne?
Thank you. Um, so just to tag on, that was my question, is that the three million dollar allocation, and that will maybe help offset some of the added expense? So, um, what was our initial... Do we have an initial budget that we had put together for that?
Yep, orig- originally, the, the budget that we used when we were applying for funds is about ten million dollars. And that included replacing the s- traffic signals along Chestnut Street.
It did.
And we aren't gonna replace them all, but we had that discussion previously, where certain intersections were gonna be redone and others are gonna eliminate them, but that included that.
So that three million should help offset maybe some of these cost increases?
Hopefully.
Hopefully, okay. Thanks, Matt.
Just to give you another perspective a little bit, uh, to the rest of the council, this whole project, when we estimated the cost on it, uh, without the increases that may happen, was what, twenty-two million dollars?
Yep.
So we've, we've got that third phase yet, co- coming down the road, so we'll still be looking for money. Uh, but we've borrowed, what, some money already, Sherry?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, we've, we've got that in place. Now, the hard part is, when we do the, uh, assessment policy, to get those done and out, because that means money coming back into the coffers from the residents that are profiting, or I shouldn't say profiting, but having new streets along their homes and businesses, and we'd like to not wait for two, two, two and a half, three years to get that money. So we wanna do that pretty fast, after the projects are completed in each phase. So just keep that in mind, okay? And it can vary, um, I don't remember what the new square footage is, or linear foot is, but, uh, uh, it'll be a little more expensive than in the past, because of material, material costs. Okay? And Matt will have that all broken out, uh, by resident, by business, uh, as we move forward. Okay, Matt, thank you there. Britt, which, which one do we wanna move up for... Oh, we gotta vote here, I'm sorry. Okay, is there any further discussion on, on this? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, congratulations, Matt, you now have, uh...
One or two.
Some money to spend with your company. Which one do you wanna move up and over?
Actually, when, since Matt's here, we wanna talk about the Silver Lake Phase Two, Phase Two and Three project. Um, wanna speak about that a little bit, Matt?
Sure. Yeah, so we were just about ready to go for bids. Uh, if you remember, we got a little over a million dollars from L C C M R for the Silver Lake Trail Project, and, uh, Britt was in the process of working on some, uh, additional I triple R B funding. And as we started finalizing our estimates, the, the, um, floating dock on Silver Lake was the signi- we knew, uh, from the get-go, was gonna be a significant portion of the cost. Well, those costs have almost, uh, they haven't quite doubled, but they've gone way up. And so, unfortunately, that, that piece of the project, which is the majority of the cost, has pushed us well beyond what the current budget is. So, we took a step back, Brits reached out to, um, Chris S. Mill over at the I triple R B, and we're going to now break that Phase Two into two different phases, so that we can try to get some of it done this summer, keep it within the budget that we have, and then look at trying to get some additional money that we can construct the pier portion of it, I guess, floating dock, whatever you wanna call it, next summer. Uh, it's just a, it's just, it's unfortunate, but it's, it's just, these, the material costs have gone up so much, and it, it's just pushed the cost really high. So, the part that we're looking at, excuse me, for this summer, is reconstructing and widening the trail portion, that's by Lakeside Park, by the baseball field, running from Ninth Avenue over to about where the public utilities is, and doing some connections to the park that's right there. And then, phase, call it phase three now, will be the actual pier and the tie-ins on either end. So, would that cover what you wanted me to cover?
Yeah. Matt, Matt, that pier is aluminum, correct?
Yeah, the, the, the framework was aluminum, the railings were aluminum, and the, the platform itself was wood.
Was wood, okay.
Yep.
It's too bad that aluminum's so, so bad, uh, I've had an aluminum, uh, flow dock at my lake cabin for twenty years, and it's still like brand new.
Yeah, they're...
The wood wears out, and so I can tell you that, but, um, and aluminum is not hot on the feet either, if it's the way they designed it now. Too bad we can't find money for aluminum decking, but...
If you went to aluminum decking, the do- that, that price of that dock would really, really go up. But the other thing on the aluminum, as long as you mentioned that, they're saying like right now, potentially, that's a, I can't even remember, many months lead time to get that material to, so it's, it's not even a matter of cost, it's a matter of, I don't even know if we could get the dock done this summer, if we bid it this summer, the way they're talking on lead time, so there's something else, I guess, to keep in mind.
In conjunction with that, since we're gonna split it up, I reached out to I triple R B and said, can I apply for two different grant cycles for that? So now we broke it up to Phase Two, so we're gonna apply for that. I will have the resolution at the council meeting next week to apply for that Phase Two, which is the trail from Ninth Avenue to about the public utilities. And I did mention them, mention to the I triple R B, since you're doing your budget, we're gonna need a lot of money for the floating dock, in the tune of about nine hundred thousand, so they are going to try to earmark that amount for our Phase Three dock project.
Well, say, have any questions, as Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Um, is there an opportunity for local businesses or private citizens to contribute to the lake beautification, and possibly using some of that money towards, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars is a lot, but, but towards other portions of the project? And is that something that, that the city can ask for, or does that need to be the Lake Beautification Committee? Or who, who, who could we encourage to seek for that kind of stuff around the lake?
A great question, and I think that'd be a great discussion with the Lake Beautification Committee, and maybe revive Virginia in the chamber even. We kinda jokingly said, maybe we need to side, sell advertising on that dock, just trying to figure out ways to get this budget back to normal.
And, and would that, and Brian's hiding from me back behind the three people, but is that something that should be going through parks and rec? Like if someone had questions, or they would start with Brian, and then Brian could direct them to the other...
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. I think I was thinking a little bit along those same lines. The other question I had is, um, remember when we acquired the park grant for the Midway Park?
Yep.
Is there any, um, park and rec grants that we could apply for, uh, since it's, it's continuing a pathway per se, connecting that park, although it's a floating dock? Would there be a way we could incorporate that into a grant process?
Yes, and Matt and I kinda had that conversation this morning, that waiting a year actually gives us a little more time to find the rest of the money we need, to make sure that dock is done the way we want it done incorrectly. So it's not a bad thing.
And then with the lake beautification, uh, they're an, else, are they a five oh one C?
They're a five oh one C six.
Can they apply for grants?
They can, for a lot of them, yes, yep.
So maybe that's a conversation that could be had alongside with, you know, maybe some community participation.
Hey, Counselor Johnson?
I would think that, uh, like Friends of the Greenhouse is a five oh one C three, I think we are, but they could also work towards that, um, as part of the city, because this trail really does connect all the parks, and that's the whole point of this, is to continue, create a continuous flow around the city, instead of having dead ends in various spots. So, maybe that's something else we can work on, too, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on this? Matt, what, you don't need any, uh...
No, no, we'll have the resolution at the council meeting next week for the apply for that triple R B grant for this phase, Phase Two.
Britt?
And then one other thing, since Matt is here, um, while I was working on grants, I said, well, hey, we have a street project, the twenty twenty-one, stage two is this year, which is Third Avenue and Southern, Southern Drive?
Yep.
To the wastewater treatment plant. And, um, I asked I triple R, is there potential for money from this year's fiscal year funds? And they said, go ahead and apply. So I will bring that resolution to the council next week also, hoping to get, I think I asked for five hundred thousand, I don't know that we'll get that, but it's worth a shot.
Are you gonna represent the city, you and Matt?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. All right, anything else that we need from Matt? Okay, Matt, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Britt, uh, we wanna move on?
Yeah, can actually we move up number nine, the discussion about the dumping of unknown substances in lift station?
Oh, yeah, this is, uh, take a look at number nine. There's a dumping problem that we have...
Thanks, Matt.
...with Wayne Transport, uh, down in, uh, south, southwest corner of, of Virginia. There's stuff being dumped into our sanitary and into our, whatever auspices we have down there, and it's creating problems with our pumps and lift stations down there. Jim, do you wanna bring us up to date on what's going on down there?
Sure. Good morning. Um, we had a visit from the M P C last Monday, I believe it was, um, there's a new inspector was down at the wastewater treatment plant. The plant basically wasn't happy, uh, what's happening is, our bugs are getting killed down there, and, uh, there's issues. We've, I see that this has been a problem since nineteen ninety-nine, uh, so it's been ongoing, but, um, I believe Wayne Transport, what their process is, they clean their tankers out, and they've got a lot of paint products in them. Well, that ends up directly in the sewer system, so it's rough on our pumps, I've actually got some pictures of what's running through, um, if you guys wanna take a look at them. But what it's doing is, it's plugging up our pumps and it's alarming our system, and my opinion, there's an odor in there, whether it's a chemical, whether it's a paint thinner, a paint, whatever it might be. And our process that we've done is, we've always pumped it out with our vacuum pump, and we, and we dispose of it at the wastewater treatment plant. I don't feel this is the correct way to dispose of that. Um, I think we're opening up a liability here if we don't correct it sooner than later. Um, so I, I guess I'm looking for your answers on this. What I'd like to see is a cease and desist on it until something more modern is brought up and taken care of, because at this rate, it's gonna be an issue in the city.
Jim, uh, don't they have a hazardous waste disposal site at the city, or the county dump up there, that they could be taking their trucks and doing stuff up there? Or is this something we have to have tested to find out what the heck's in this? Because I, I think they need to either build themselves a big sump with filters before the stuff enters our system, so they can flush it out, take it out, dispose of it properly, or something to that effect.
And my understanding there is, um, it's something that's, they've been working on, but it's never been a priority to, to them. They did put a press in there, which relieves some of the liquids, and then they'll pump the liquids out. They did put a couple of tanks, they've got a couple of above ground holding tanks that they were looking at tying in there to strip the liquid off, and that material, then maybe look at a disposal, but this has been going on five, six, seven, eight years, so it, it still hasn't been corrected.
I'm guessing, uh, from my perspective, uh, Mr. City Attorney, that we need to take a look at some type of legal action to stop this, because we can't continue to have materials pumped into our wastewater treatment plant, and then if we don't get it all solved, then it ends up going out in the, uh, Wester Rivers or the Manganika Creek, and we got a problem there then at the end of the line. So, um, we need to do something. Anybody else have any thoughts on this? I think we need to have our city attorney put together a cease and desist order to Wayne Transport. Steve?
Thank you. Um, can, can the folks down at the wastewater treatment tell when it's happening? Like, like is there a direct correlation between them cleaning and then stuff coming in flow?
Well, i- it's been ongoing, but the, they know which lift station it's coming from, and there's only, I believe, three, um, businesses that are tied into that lift station over in that area. And you can see coming out of their service line to the lift station what it looks like, and, uh, they're getting it at the wastewater treatment plant, which is making the plant unhappy. And it just so happened that the new inspector showed up last Monday, and it kinda showed some, they were seeing some issues there, too. And we've been addressing this since I've been here now, because we were there, uh, two times in about a three-week period, um, we had issues with our lift station, so we were there with a vac truck and, and relieving some of that, but we were taking it out of there, and I didn't like the disposal of it. I understood we do bill them occasionally for it, but I didn't feel that the disposal was, is proper for what we should be doing with that material. was, is proper for what we should be doing with that material.
And that's kind of what I'm, I'm looking at is, I'm, I'm trying to be preventative so we don't have, you know, we've already, again, this is another issue that we've been dealing with now for twenty some years, and I'd like to get it resolved. So I, I, I guess my question is, is do we have documentation? Have we, we got an email with the pictures, I'm guessing that you have. We got that email yesterday or something. I guess I want to make sure that we're pinning it, that it is them. And, and I agree that we, they need to stop doing whatever they're doing. And if they're dumping, and I guess I'd want to know is what they're doing on their property legal to start with? And are we dealing with the ramifications of something they shouldn't be doing to start with? So I, I'm fully in support of, of a letter saying, stop until we figure this out. And I would hope that we can put in that letter that if you don't stop, it's a fine or whatever is the legal process and it's significant. You know, we, we don't know, you said it's killing our bugs, which is one thing, but we don't know what else it's causing, you know? And if we're having to be responsible after the post, everything else, I think it's time to take this seriously and that we make them stop doing it. It, it's just one of those things that I, I think, again, we, we let it slide for long enough. So I would, I would make a motion that we authorize the city staff to send them a letter saying to stop and put some teeth in it so that it's enforceable in the future if they don't stop.
Motion? Your support? Your support?
I would support communication to them with regard to this issue and seek options for them to do it in a different manner.
I, I think, if we did, that we need to do more than just, because we sent letters already to them, correct, Jim?
Yes, and like I say, I haven't been here long, but I was doing a little research on that there. It is dated back to 1999 when the, when there was my first notice of issues in that paperwork.
I think, Mr. Lindsey, can you give us a little perspective of what we could do legally?
Thank you, yes. I do think the first step is good communication and make sure that we get a letter out to them notifying them formally and officially that we are on notice that this is a concern, that we believe that the concern originates with them, asking them if they believe that we're mistaken, to let us know why they believe we're mistaken, and also to include the standard cease and desist language and let them know that if they don't comply with that cease and desist, because this is causing imminent harm to our treatment plant. And, and I do understand, I don't understand the whole process, but I do know that replacing or refreshing those bugs is expensive to do. And so letting them know that if the, the activity doesn't cease and desist immediately, we could turn to the courts for injunctive relief and.
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. I just have a, so we, I think it was sent by Britt yesterday, so it's a little different than our packet, but it does state that Wayne Transports has an industrial permit and it's listed with, as an industrial stormwater permit. There is a prohibition and limitation clause in there, and it's a Minnesota state statute which prohibits the activities, discharges or releases such as domestic and industrial wastewater and processed wastewater. So it may be coming off their trucks when they're washing it, we don't really know. Do, do you know, is it something that they're actually dumping or is it coming from them washing and that's going into the storm sewer system? Or is it?
I, I was actually in there one day when they were doing the work and what they're doing is they're cleaning out their paint containers and their tankers and a lot of that material's ending up on the floor. But they have a press that takes the, kind of the processed paint or the dried up paint and it, the press releases some of the water and that from it. But a lot of it's, I hate to say it, but a lot of it's going down the drain. I mean, it's, and it, it smells more like a paint waste, whether it's a solvent or a benzene or toline or, and Matt and I had talked about maybe us running a sample to decipher what it is. I know I talked to PACE and NTS, neither one of them were able to run that sample, but I just thought for our resources, so if we have something on it.
I would, I would agree with that. So this activity is happening on their own property?
Yes, inside their facility.
Inside their facility?
Yes.
So if we get that possible testing, you could maybe identify what the contaminants are. And is there a, I guess, I don't know if you brought it up, is there a place that they actually can dump hazardous waste within our, within the county or?
Not, not that, I don't believe. I know, I actually did work back in the days as a contractor down at their Rosemount facility. And they ran a pretty tight ship down there, they were, they were in compliance and, but there's places that do dispose, a lot of them are incinerators in Indiana and Illinois and that is what you'll see. That's where the mines are bringing them. That's where OSI Environmental and them are bringing that type of stuff, but in, in, in larger quantities, smaller household quantities, the county landfill will take them, but.
So I, I would agree with the cease and desist. I'm just trying to say how, how, what kind of recommendation can we give to them to alleviate this problem? Because obviously it's happening within their property, they've got to wash out their, their units. But how, is there like some sort of processor that they can purchase so that it filters it clean before it hits the drain?
I think you could put in a holding, an underground tank or an above ground holding tank, which they do have on the property.
And then pump it out?
But to tie that into a wash bay or whatever it might be, and then them dispose of it properly and it not get into our city sewer or into our services.
Okay. And is that something that we could recommend within our letter? So that it's, so that we're trying to say, here's some options you may have to mitigate?
And, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure where the guidelines are as far as their disposal of that material either because as a, as, if it's a hazardous waste, it's called a cradle of grave where they're responsible from the beginning to the end of it. So I don't know, we could recommend a holding tank, but that might not be the best possibility either. I mean, the state or that might say, hey, this is what we want.
That would basically be between them and, and the state.
Yes.
Yeah, that was going to be my recommendation. I, I would suggest just the recommendation be that they follow the state statutes and the state guidelines for that rather than give them some kind of a, because like Jim said, who knows what the best option for that particular business is. But there are, there are requirements for wastewater treatment.
And they should know those requirements, I would assume, since
Yes.
they know what materials are within what they're cleaning.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
There's one other thing we need to really take a look at, and I don't know whether our legal department can do this. Sounds like from what they have for a permit, it's, it's not to go into our sanitary, it's to go into stormwater, it sounds like system. That's totally separate from our wastewater treatment. So none of it should be getting to our wastewater treatment plant through even the floor drains. They got to do something there because if that permit says it has to do with stormwater, they got to keep it somehow and get it filtered so it can go into the stormwater system without hazardous materials. That's what we need to look at in, in the long run.
And you think, you would think with that, if they're discharging into that stormwater, you'd think that they would be required to do continuous test, testing or monitoring as they're disposing of that? And I'm not aware of any of that.
We sure got to do that with our stuff in the wastewater treatment plant. But it shouldn't be going there in the first place, it sounds like. So we need to get a hold of that permit too, Jim, somehow, what it is and wherever it's filed and what it actually says so we can get our copy to our attorney. Does anybody else have any comment? Okay, so do we, we have a motion on the floor? I think we do, don't we? Okay. Motion is to have our city attorney and staff come up with a, how do you want to put that? Cease and desist letter for what's going on there. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Anything else you want, Britt, to move up?
Yep, and then after that, I want to move item number six, the review of recommendations in the personnel committee meeting held Tuesday, April 12th.
Okay.
From the, there was a personnel committee meeting held Tuesday, April 12th. The first item that was discussed was the request to reinstate the library intern position for summer 2022. This intern, the intern we had at the time was laid off in 2020 due to COVID. I mean, we have not brought them back, but now the library is fully functional and planning for a very busy summer season. Jody, Library Director Jody is requesting to bring the library intern position back. The Personnel Committee did meet and did discuss it and did approve the posting of that position.
Okay. Any further discussion on this to start with or someone will make a motion to reinstate that position?
I'll move the approval of the reinstatement.
Okay. Move by Counselor Paulson, is there support?
Support.
Okay, either one will, Maya will support it. Any further discussion?
When?
Steve?
When will this, when will you have the person up and helping? I know the summer program is coming up quicker than it should.
Do you have to post interns internally, Amanda?
No. I don't think it has to be posted internally, so as soon as it's approved through here, we will, we've got a job description and I'll work with Britt and Sheri to get it posted.
Okay, anybody else have a comment on motion? Hearing, hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else you want to move up, Britt?
Then item 6B is the recommendation to the City Council for approval of the proposed accounting clerk three job description.
That's the one in the finance office, correct?
Correct, we now have a vacancy, Lori posted into the Wendy's position. So now we have a vacancy and the finance office is requesting to fill that vacancy with an accounting clerk three rather than accounting clerk one.
A little more skills?
More skills, a little more experience, a little more background and history in accounting.
Okay, we need that position in that, in that office for separation of duties, et cetera, that we've talked about during audits and stuff. I'm looking for a motion to move forward with that particular level, level three, I guess it's called.
We'll move, support for discussion.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Friedle and supported by Counselor Johnson for discussion. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Once this is in place, how will the separation of duties be defined and will it be tangible? Will it be in writing so that we all understand how that works and how those separations are helping to make the audit less complicated?
Yes, and I apologize, it didn't make it into this packet, but at the Personnel Committee we had control sheets that the auditors use that dictate, that show you the flow of every document, like an accounts payable invoice or a cash receipt or, what's the other one, Sheri? The payroll. So we, we have showed the Personnel Committee how we modified what it was to what it's going to be.
Then.
Oh, can I just add that, yes, we did talk with Greg Knutson about this and told him, showed him the draft for the job descriptions, and it is my personal goal to get that removed from the audit report, so.
Then, because there's been a lot of changes, is there a need for separate spaces for those three folks? Is there any of those jobs that there's personal information being exchanged that, that our employees may feel more comfortable if they had a space to talk to somebody quietly? And I'm, I'm thinking about like if I need to go in and for reporting purposes, need to get, talk about some medical stuff and there's three people sitting in that room and they need to go talk to the payroll person, is there a need to physically divide up those folks for a practicality portion? And is this the time to consider what that might look like?
You know, that, that's a good suggestion, Steve, or Counselor Johnson. But at this time, both Megan and Lori have HR and confidentiality skills that both of them are helping with some of the benefits stuff and apparel stuff that we'll just see what this third person comes. If they don't have any of that, then yeah, we should probably revisit.
And I'm thinking too, just the practicality of me as a person coming in and wanting to have a, a personal discussion with Megan. It's really hard because there's people coming in and out of there all the time, so.
The advantage of what we want, why we want to do this is that every one of them will be cross-trained. So the reason that Lori's learning payroll is because she's going to be able to do payroll. So she does need to understand those benefits and what they are and kind of people's situations, what the questions may be. Because if Megan's out for an extended period of time, then Lori can pick it up. And we expect this third person will also be able to pick it up so that there's always somebody that can do payroll. If another pandemic happened and two of them were taken out for some reason, we always have somebody that can do payroll.
And as far as for a more private conversation, I would direct them to me.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this issue? Hearing none, we do have a motion, correct, on the floor? Okay. Maya?
Thank you. Could you explain the difference, the difference between the level one and the level three? Do we have a level two available for, in this position? We go from one to three?
No, we have a one, two and three in the, I believe you got it, passed out by.
But is anybody in that position? In, in, if, in the one, accounting clerk one?
Clerk one is vacant right now. We are requesting to fill with an accounting clerk three.
And the accounting clerk two is vacant?
There has never been an accounting clerk two.
Okay, that's kind of what I was asking. So we jump from one to three. And on the audit, can you explain when you say we get ding, that's not a monetary issue, is it?
It's, well, depends on how you look at it, it affects our bond rating. They, they take that into consideration too.
Okay, but, but money wise, we're not paying for every time we get?
No, it's a fraud alert, basically is what they're telling us. There's potential for fraud to exist because we don't have enough segregation of duties.
Okay, but with three level threes, there is a segregation of duties?
It does help segregate, yes. Thank you.
Hey, can I call you back? I'm at a meeting, okay? Okay, bye. Sorry about that, I forgot to turn my phone off. Turned off right now. I have a bad habit of forgetting to turn it off for meetings. Okay, any other, Maya did you or Julianne?
Want to continue? No, you can go first. Okay, so I do have one question then. Sheri, when, when we're referencing accounting clerk with payroll, so I'm, I'm on that sheet that just got passed out. So the other two employees that are down there currently are accounting clerk three with payroll?
Accounting clerk three, I was filled by Lori, that used to be Wendy's position. That's accounting clerk three.
And Britt just said.
Now change the job description.
Change the job description to include backing up payroll?
I hear to posting it internally.
Okay, so.
Is three, the accounting clerk three and the accounting clerk with payroll at the same wage scale?
Right, I, I see that, but what I'm asking is, will all, will both of them have the with payroll skills?
The accounting clerk three, one of them will, will be accounts receivable, one of them will be accounts payable, and one of them will be payroll, which is already listed. So what's going to happen though is all three are going to be cross-trained to be able to do payroll. Previously, the previous person that was in accounting three that retired did not do payroll, did not want to learn it. So we need some cross-training down there. We're such a small staff department for the amount of cash flow, receipts, payments, going through, the size of the payroll now in the last ten years is almost doubled. doubled.
So I, just to, just to, I guess, back up my question, I just want to make sure, because we're, we're really not using the accounting clerk with payroll position, even though it's the same wage. We're not using that title currently to fill anything.
Megan is in that position. So, you know, we may need to make some title changes in the actual contract to reflect the new job descriptions, but that's what.
So you're gonna have one? You're gonna have one accounting clerk three doing AR, one accounting clerk three doing AP, one accounting clerk doing payroll, and they're all going to be cross-trained? So is there cert, like, a certification for payroll? Like, how, how are we?
I'd have to go through, I double-sided mine. I believe it's in there, is the job description in there, where we're requiring at least a bachelor's degree, or we want, it would be nice to have a CPA or, you know, preferred. So this person is, needs to be well-educated.
Okay. I guess what I?
Go ahead.
Three is essentially is what they are. Their, their qualifications and their skills are all at a level accounting clerk three.
The technical?
Yeah.
Position would be under, under our ASME wage scale, would actually be accounting clerk three with payroll, which we don't, we do not currently have that. We have accounting clerk with payroll.
Right, we should be adding the three into her title, so accounting clerk three with payroll.
So does that need to be, I mean, it's a technicality, but does that need to be changed within our ASME wage scale? And I don't know if you follow me. Are you understanding what I'm saying? Because your, your expectation is that they're all going to be able to do payroll. That's your expectation, right? So I just, to, on a technicality, you probably should, we should tighten that up on the ASME wage scale, that it's not just accounting clerk three, it's accounting clerk three with payroll, so that they can all do accounts receivable, accounts payable, and payroll. And that, is that correct, Sheri?
Yeah, and, um, you know, we can confer with the union, but basically, that's what an accounting clerk three is going to do.
Thank you.
So from our, um, personnel meeting, they, there is a proposed change to the job description, correct?
Yep.
And it now includes payroll. So I understand what you're saying. I don't think we, from that side, see an issue at this point because the job description for three is changing to include that duty. So, um, the issuing, there is still an employee at accounting clerk with payroll, um, and we're not proposing making any change to her, so we would, I guess, from our perspective, that title should be left alone. However, the, the new one has payroll included, and so any person who is seeing that posting internally or externally will know that that is their responsibility and know that they, they must become trained, cross-trained to do that when Megan, who is the accounting clerk with payroll, is absent. Does that make sense? Or am I missing your question?
No, 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 it makes sense. I just thought in our discussion, we had, we said we were bringing them all up to level three, and what this reflects here, which I guess I didn't catch while we were having that discussion, it just says accounting clerk with payroll, but the, the, the actual technical is she's an accounting clerk three with payroll.
Yes.
Because we just changed the accounting clerk three job description.
Correct. To incorporate more. I mean, I, I don't think there is a lack of understanding on the part of the two employees in that, at, what we're doing, right? And there's no gaps in the job description, from what I've seen, that would, you know, allow an employee to not participate in this change, if that makes sense.
And that gives, it's, I mean, I guess I'm kind of looking out for, if we do the accounting clerk three then, and then we say, okay, payroll would only be in the absence of the one with the title of accounting clerk with payroll.
That's correct, and so that's just as Sheri described, the idea is that these duties are segregated, so one of them will be taking receivable and one payable. I'm not an accountant. And, um, so if some of the person who is primarily responsible for receivable is gone, then somebody has to step into that. If the person who is doing payroll is gone, somebody has to be able to step into that, but it's very much segregated. And so since we have an employee who is currently responsible for payroll, we're not proposing a change in that. However, the other two are expected, under this new updated job description, to become competent as well.
Okay. And I, that makes sense and clarifies where I was going, because I want, just wanted to make sure that it's not going to come back then and say, okay, now we're doing payroll, we want a wage increase. So that's in the job description of accounting clerk three, and they will be cross-trained in accounts payable, accounts receivable, and payroll.
Correct, because the accounting three, I mean, and the accounting three, if you're, everybody's not analyzing the job or the wage scale, is the same rate as accounting clerk with payroll.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I've got a question here, on this, as we move forward with, uh, them all becoming accounting clerk threes with payroll, because that's eventually what's going to happen. We need to make sure that there is a process in there, and I, I've spent 40 years in business with cross-training and stuff with people in, in the business that I used to run. You have to have somebody that signs off on their, what I want to say, to their capability of doing this job. We're not just going to jump them and pay until somebody has signed off that they can do these duties. I won't stand for that, because that is a ridiculous way of doing business, you just jump them up without having them fully trained in this position. Once they're trained, then jump them, I don't have a problem with that. That's my personal philosophy from dealing with hiring and, and firings and stuff for 40 years in my pharmacy business. You gotta have them trained, because it's too critical that you, if you don't. Right? Enough said. Anybody else got a comment? Okay, hearing none, uh, we have a motion on the floor, correct? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Sheri, do you want to just repeat the motion real quick?
Moved by Counselor Friedle, seconded by Counselor Johnson, who recommend the council approval of the proposed accounting clerk three job description.
Okay, I have no problem, I have no problem with that, as long as we end up keeping our ducks in a row on, on this change. I think it's, uh, very needed in, in that department, so it's not, it's not an issue. I don't want just automatic raising of salaries without the qualifications being met. That's where I'm standing, sitting. And if you don't like it out there, too bad. I'm going to push for that. Never had any employee that I trained as pharmacy technician, et cetera, they went through a training program first, then they got their raises after the training and they qualified for it. All right, any further discussion? Julianne?
Thank you, just one more point of clarification. So when we post this, we will be looking for someone, or the preferred experience would be to have some payroll experience in their background?
Yes.
Hopefully. Okay, thank you.
And if they do have it and they do qualify, I don't have a problem then if we give them a raise, okay? But if we have somebody that we're training to begin with, then I want to, I have a monitored qualification schedule. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what do we want to go to next, Britt?
Six C is the approve the proposed modification of the job description for lead recreation assistant and recommend setting the hourly wage at 2478 with a six-month review.
Is there a motion for that?
Can we speak to that first?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, well, certainly you can speak to it first.
Well, we met as a Personnel Committee with the, uh, ASME union representatives, who are professional negotiators and very, very good at their job. I am not a professional negotiator and kind of felt out of my league, to be honest with you. And so kudos to you for the job that you do, for your, your staff. I was going by the suggested increase to the job that was given to us by the department head, which was $22 an hour. And so that's where we began the discussion, in my mind. Now, there's no doubt that this job, the lead recreation assistant, has grown significantly and evolved over time, and there's legitimate additions to the job description that have been added, for which additional compensation is certainly justified. And thus, we had the conversation to, to determine what the justification for the increase in pay would be. So the union representatives first started with regarding the reference to the amount paid to a skilled laborer through ASME, which was 2517. And so, in my mind, I just worked the calculator on my phone, I took the 2517, I subtracted the 1851, came up with 666 difference, and split that difference and suggested 2185 as a starting point for us to begin consideration for that increase in pay. ASME opposed that amount and continued to discuss other jobs on the wage scale that they felt were comparative to the job that we were discussing. And the three that they talked about were the parking meter, which is at 2478, the administrative assistants, which are at 2840, and the administrative clerks at 2751. So the conversation continued, and we went back and forth with regard to what we felt was a justifiable raise for this particular position. The conversation ended at, um, 2478, which, in my mind, I don't know that the city can continue to afford giving raises upwards of $6 an hour for jobs that are new to us with the ITMEC and jobs that are not fully established on the wage scale with ASME, and for which they've been being successfully accomplished, exceedingly successfully accomplished, at 1851 per hour. So I'm a little troubled by where we went with this, from what we're paying them to what we're considering paying them. That's not to say that they're not worth that. It's just that can we continue to afford that in the city? And my concern is, I mean, the reality is, in a city and in a municipality, over 80-plus percent of your, uh, cost to the city are, are personnel costs, which are, that's where the value lies, is the people that are working for the municipality. And my concern is, at some point, if our personnel's costs are rising at such a significant rate, to where we're not going to be able to afford the things necessary to provide the services to the level that we have in the city. An analogy would be, we're going to have people that are able to drive the trucks and pull the trailers and have the number two shovels to add the tar into the potholes, but we won't be able to afford the tar. And that might be sound silly, but that's kind of what I'm thinking in my head. So, um, in any event, we, we brought this forward, not necessarily to have an immediate approval, but necessarily to have some discussion with regard to it. I think you all need to be involved in this conversation and this discussion as to whether or not this raise is justifiable and legitimate. Now, the job has evolved to the point where there's an intensity to it, and the roles and responsibilities have been, uh, increased, but primarily with regard to when the event is actually happening. There's a lot of times during the day and during the week when the rec assistant, the lead rec assistant, is not engaged in the actual event itself, but is doing other things that aren't as intense. And so, um, in any event, I, I felt that the, the, uh, suggested wage increase to $22 per hour, as suggested by the department head, was a reasonable place to start, and we arrived at 2478, which I would have difficulty approving at this point in time without further discussion on the part of other people's input, so.
I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. And I would say that, I think that, that significant of a wage increase is a little premature now, since we are just hired an event coordinator, who I would guess is going to take, is going to change the dynamics of that team. And, um, I think that, that's something we need to consider as we move forward, too, that there's now an additional person on that team who we have designated to have more, more, more authority, and I, I realize that the job description kind of focuses on the, um, concession stands and that kind of stuff, so, um, you know, and I, I'm looking at the, the wage increases and, and everything that's on here. And honestly, a lot of these numbers, um, are, are not terribly, I mean, I know it's the base wage, but we have to also keep in mind that many of our utility folks, or whatever their titles are, get a 50 cents an hour increase when they're running certain equipment, or a dollar increase when they're running certain equipment. So, uh, being cognizant of all of that, again, with, with budgets, um, there was, I, I remember reading in here that there's people that are overly qualified for these positions, but those people choose to be in those positions. They have chosen to take that job, they have chosen to work for what we've offered them. And, and everybody has the opportunity, as, as we all do, to change positions, change jobs, uh, request a, uh, request evaluation of their positions and that kind of stuff. So, um, I, I'm a little hesitant at the $6 an hour increase at this time, simply because the dynamics of the building is changing, and I'd like to see how that plays out, uh, as we move forward. That's all I have for now.
Okay, anybody else, uh, that, Maya, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
Thank you. And, and thank you for bringing this forward. I stayed for part of the meeting, um, for the personnel, um, but I'm also concerned about our overall cost to the city and how the budget is going to work with increases such as this. Do you have any input, Sheri?
May?
I would like to default to, um, the department director, and of course, we just hired a sales and marketing person, and that is going to be a driver for revenue. So I, yeah, I'd like to see how that, you know, plays out in time.
With this increase in pay, we are looking at needing about an additional 15 renters per year, 15 additional events per year. Does that answer your question?
How many events do we have planned? How many weddings, just say for this year, how many weddings do we have coming up?
Weddings are a very poor example, in my opinion. Weddings are not where we need our focus to be. We keep talking about the weddings. Where we need our focus to be is those returning customers, which are our corporate events. That is going to, moving forward, that is the bread and butter of our financial model, is meeting the needs of the corporate events that are weekday events. So weddings, I believe right now, we have on the calendar six weddings booked and three class reunions booked. Corporate events, um, we are averaging about four to five a month. Some weeks, we have two to three corporate events. So you can see our corporate events are much more frequent, um, and that's why I believe that we need to be focusing on those and getting those repeat customers, which the corporate events are repeat customers.
Taking off of, um, Steve's idea, when we bring these new people on, I mean, we're, we're hiring more people, people for that facility, but bumping the wages up, um, I, I'm also concerned about the cost of what it's going to do. We haven't really had a full, complete year of, um, events and things happening there, so I'm, I'm also concerned, um, for the money we're spending. I mean, it, it's, to me, it's very scary, sitting here and making these decisions. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant on this, too, to jump up that high, and I know, it, it's like, where is the bottom line that you can move up? It seems like we're going from It seems like we're going from zero to three. I mean, it's, we're jumping to the top, where, I'm a little concerned about that. Thank you.
I've got one thing more to say before Amanda, you could give her a chance to speak to Amanda. Okay, this is absolutely ludicrous and nuts, what they're looking for. It's a $9,000 a year increase in pay. Okay, plus the 3, 3, and 3 that they are going to get with the contracts. So, that's another nine, so it's a 32% increase in wages. I have never, in 40 years of business, seen that kind of a raise. I will absolutely oppose that kind of thing with out increasing and seeing the skills that these individuals have before we start to raise for us, and then we can phase them in. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm not going to vote for a 32% increase. That's nuts. That is absolutely crazy. You talk about more than one individual going through this, through this. You can, we cannot afford that. We had this, we had this happen. We had this happen. And you, Scott, you might remember this. About 20 years ago, we told this council that if they continued with the process of all the vacation time, all the other stuff, we would have at least two to three individuals missing every single day of the year for jobs. Okay? And that puts the pressure on everybody else. Amanda, you're smiling, but I've been around business a lot longer than you have on wages, and I cannot go along with a 32% increase. I can do increments in there and move people up, but they're going to get 3, 3, and 3 because they'll automatically start. Why don't they get the raise per year?
Excuse me, there's only one raise left.
The raise that's on there right now already, it already has the 3% raise, because they weren't here underneath the first 3%. So, in 2022, they got a 3% from $18, went up to 1854. So, this year, on January 1st, they will get one more.
2023.
2023, they will get one more 3%, and that's it then, until the next contract.
So, the other ones sat there in limbo, they never got those.
Correct.
They weren't a job at that particular time underneath the first year of our contract.
That's, that's still, if you even subtract that, you're still looking at 29% increase.
It's not a 29% increase, because they've already had their 3% raise, because when we came up with this wage, it was $18 an hour.
I understand.
So, in 2022, they got it to 1854. So, from 1854 now, they're going to get three more percent on top of whatever else they would, if we come to an agreement.
Put your $24 and some odd cents, so that's a $5 raise anyway, per hour.
Counselor, you've provided a perfect segue, if I might, just to describe the process of.
I don't think anybody's worth that kind of a raise in a year.
Can, can I speak to that then?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So, the issue, I think, in framing this, and, you know, Counselor Freedley was generous about my negotiating skills, that's not what this is about. This is about the job description, and this is about the requirements of which the city is asking for this position, which have changed. The job description is updated, it's on page 34 of your packet, you can see those changes. And so, when we're talking about this, we're not talking about what an individual is worth, we're talking about what a job description is worth. We're not talking about a raise for an individual, we're talking about the comparison of the skills required under a job description and how that compares to the other skills that you have assessed a value for within the wage scale. And so, when I'm comparing, I'm comparing these, you know, as Counselor Freedley referenced, these jobs, what I'm doing is, you know, and what Scott is doing as representatives of this union, is we're saying, you have assessed the skills and education and background needed, and you have assigned a wage. And so, we did refer to these wages. We referred to the receptionist, which wasn't actually quoted, which is currently paid at, I apologize, I lost it, 2534 an hour, and has, requires simply a high school diploma or GED, no additional education. We compared skilled labor, which also has no requirements, but has physical requirements of the position. Yep, and, and, and then we compared the administrative clerks and administrative assistants. The administrative assistants does have a requirement for an AA, right? And you'll notice that this job description has been altered, and that the minimum education requirement on page 35 has been entirely overhauled, and that the number of skills and duties has more than doubled on this description. What the, this position was designed to do originally, and what we, we had no experience, the building wasn't open when we needed to hire these positions, and what it was originally was inventorying and running concession stands and cleaning the areas around the concession stands, including kind of the general areas outside of it. And we assigned an $18 an hour wage for that. What has happened is that the duties and responsibilities of this position have exploded. And yes, that is down to the two individuals that you have in them. They have performed work for you far and beyond those concession stands. The problem is that if those individuals leave this, these positions, you will need to rehire. And what you will be hiring for under the existing job description is more people to run concession stands. And what you'll be hiring for is somebody with no experience, no background in hospitality, if you do not update this description. That's, that's what the description says, and you can shake your head, but that's what it says.
I understand.
Yep, and so, if you're going to hire, just, okay, yep.
Let me just, enter one thing, okay? We have the responsibility, not the union, for job description. So, if we dump the old job description and put in a new one, that's our responsibility.
Then you have the obligation to negotiate that wage. We understand.
Absolutely, we do.
So, this is what I'm.
But that doesn't, that doesn't mean we're going to have to hire back at the lower skill level. But my premise is, you do not put a person in with a higher wage, or thought, phasing them in until you can find out if they actually can do the job.
But that.
Even though they have the skills. I can, I can take any job description, write it up.
Your.
But if I'm applying for a job, and I'll get hired.
Your administrative staff.
I know how to write those, those.
Your administrative staff has the responsibility to vet applicants for those and to ensure that you're receiving applicants who are qualified and capable of performing the work. And that is a lot down to the minimum education and experience. So, in changing those minimum education experience, including to include an AA degree, you are saying, we will not accept applicants who do not have the skills to perform at the level at which the current employees have performed. Right? You are saying that we have changed these expectations of this job, and that we need somebody who can continue to do the amount of work that these two individuals have been doing and being frankly, underpaid for. And so, because we are doing that, we proposed that, and negotiated a wage. We started higher than where this has ended up, because of the things that I noted for you in this job description. If you're asking for an AA, the lowest position that currently has an AA is the administrative assistant, which is paid $28.40 an hour. And that's what this is about. This isn't about individuals, this isn't about trying to break the city's budget, this is about trying to put these positions in line with what you have already, as a council, agreed, you know, these positions are worth. And we have significantly backed down from that. I think that's a valid argument on our part, that 2840 was the correct placement, right? Because in addition to the simple education background, you're requiring more of these individuals than you are frankly, of an administrative assistant. You're requiring them to interact with the public in the way that an administrative assistant does, but to have managerial skills for, to do, be able to do inventory, to be able to act as a leader of the rec assistants, and to have those interpersonal skills on an internal level, to interact with vendors and to maintain relationships with vendors, and to, and to interact with community groups, and to, to work on scheduling. I mean, the amount of responsibility you have put onto these two individuals is 100% justified. And so, no, we're not asking for 2840, although that was certainly where Scott and I both wanted to be. We compromise, right? And, and where we're saying is that, yes, I understand it's a significant increase, but it is not out of line with the responsibilities that you have added to these individuals and to this job description itself. So, you know, our concern is that the city is able to hire and to utilize the skillset that this building has come to rely on. And these two individuals have been, and the prior people who were in these positions, you know, because there has been turnover. The building relies on their skills, it relies on their work in order to function. And we, you know, as a city, you need that to continue, you need to be able to have reliable staff who are exceeding any expectation you had, you're not doing that at $18 an hour, you can make that at Aldi, right? And, and for no skills, no experience, and certainly no college degree. And so, because you're asking that, and because this is the description that has come forward, this is an appropriate wage. I understand completely the position the council is in, and we are not coming to you asking to add more positions, we're not coming to you with a request to change the wage of something that has not dramatically increased in responsibility. This request is in part from the department's needs, this is in part from, you know, our perspective as union representatives, but it ultimately circles back to a concern of the ability of the council to hire and retain individuals in these positions and to get the level of work that you're asking for in this job description. This job description is, these are full-time positions, these would be the lowest-paid full-time positions in our unit by several dollars an hour. They are, it is certainly below several, as I've already noted, positions that have no educational requirements. It is a position that, in many ways, would still be underpaid. It, the, you know, anxiety that you're feeling is simply that there is just so much, you know, space and dissonance between what is the work that's being performed and the wage rate, which is frankly, too low. I, I understand it's not an easy decision, part of the conversation that Personnel Committee had with Brian present, was with the department and with Sheri present, to say, can this be funded? And they, they acknowledged that they believe that it can.
Understood.
Understood, which is why I'm trying to describe the background, yeah.
Okay, let me ask you one other question, Amanda. If you're out hiring as, as a boss for a big company, okay?
You're not a big company, and you're not a private entity.
We're, we're over 100 employees in the city, okay? That's a large, according to the state, that is a significant employer in the state of Minnesota. But if you're going to hire somebody, you asked for those skills in a job description, you're going to pare down to people that have those skills, but that doesn't mean that they can perform those skills until you see what they can do. Until you can see what they can do. You have to have a segment in there where you evaluate them at six months and a year, and then I don't have a problem when you jack the wages up even at six months.
I believe you have a probation rate of pay for the first six months. You, you, yep, for the, or the first 67, no, three months. All new employees start at a rate of 10% less, no, it's a 90% rate for six months of their employment. So, you do that already.
But is there an evaluation process by their supervisor?
Of course, there's a probationary period in which the employer.
Why don't we see those evaluations as a city council?
I cannot speak to your managerial processes, I can only speak to the union contract. So, there are, there is a probation rate of pay of 90% for the first six months, the employer has the right, under probationary period, to term without ca, you know, there's no access to the grievance procedure, that, those are your rights while you have a probationary employee.
I understand that, I've been around a long time, I understand all that.
Okay, I was just clarifying, because you said that you should have the right to see if a person is capable of performing before they're granted the full wage, and you do.
Absolutely, I wouldn't hire somebody without an evaluation period in between their time of hire and their first year where they make, kick up the wage, or at six months.
Understood, Counselor, I was simply referencing that you do have that right under our union contract.
All right.
Which seemed to be a point of confusion.
I don't want to argue with you, but I just disagree with what you're doing. Okay, you got more, Amanda, or can we move on here?
No, I mean, I simply, I guess I would end with, our understanding is that the process with personnel, is that the Personnel Committee meets with the union to have these discussions and these negotiations, and our understanding is that this is a recommendation from the Personnel Committee, just as we would make a recommendation during full contract negotiations. We believe our responsibility is to advocate for that decision that is made, and we believe that a recommendation came from your Personnel Committee and that it is important to move forward. There are some vacancies approaching with this position, potentially, and there are further potential vacancies. And if the job description is not changed, you will not have the ability to post for somebody who's adequate. If you make these description changes, you have the requirement to negotiate this wage. And if this wage is not negotiated, you know, in line with the facts of the position, then we will continue to contest it. Thank you for your consideration of this, and we are available to ask, answer questions.
Okay, I'm not sure who is next, Julianne, I'll let you go first, since you're, you laid on for quite some time.
Thank you. One of the, one of the discussion points that we had at the Personnel Committee was the actual job points. Minnesota, the state of Minnesota assigns job points for job descriptions, and I'm wondering if we have received, or have that, has that been tabulated for the actual points?
No, it has not, with the holiday and.
I, I think that, that would, that should actually be done, so we can kind of assess. What, what do those points, is it, I've never actually seen that, is it like a, if you're between this and this, this is the recommendation? So, there, is it tiered?
In, in some, I'm sorry, mayor.
Oh, no, you go ahead, Sheri.
In some of the job descriptions on the state, they, they'll break it down, and yeah, they'll give a small synopsis of what the job description entails, and sometimes you have to use two different jobs to work, but they give you a range of points to work with.
And is it, with that range of points, is there a recommended hourly rate? No.
No, what, what happens is, if you have a wage, you have small points, lower points because of the accountability, responsibility of the job, if it falls in a smaller points scale, and you have a huge wage that's equal to someone who's maybe making, you know, in 400 or some other points, it's going to skew your pay equity report.
That's the, that's the problem, Julianne. If your pay equity gets skewed, that means everybody below that individual job description, we have to figure out a way to balance that, so everybody may get a raise. I've been through that many times.
This refers to more pay equity?
Pay equity, yeah, and we have to do that through the state. And that's, and don't, don't tell me that that's wrong, Amanda, because it's not wrong.
You're absolutely right, Counselor, that's what I just wanted to refer back to, I think we talked a little bit about this in Personnel, Counselor Paulson, and Sheri certainly referenced that. But that is why I'm bringing up things like the experience and the degree, those are things that influence the points values, and so, your pay equity, conversely, can also be thrown off if you have a description that has these requirements, you know, and it has a higher points value, and you assign it a lower wage, right? So, that is also a problem in the reverse. And that's why we continue to reference, you know, here's, here's what this is, position is, you know, comparable to in this contract, right? So, if you have people who are being paid more for less qualifications or less points, you know, as it is totaled out, then that is a problem, too. And so, that's why we are arguing that, hey, it needs to be in line with the scale you've already agreed to, because that all references back to this.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. And then, so, part of our discussion while we were sitting here at the Personnel Committee level was if the wage, because of the job description had changed, and we kind of went back and forth on the, the actual wage itself, not necessarily in the job description, we weren't really reaching consensus, I guess you would call it, or, or agreement, we were kind of far between. And one of the recommendations was to remove some of the qualifications in the job description to lower that wage then. So, I don't know if that's something we want to talk about. I, my, my point or my reasoning for wanting to leave those in, they are dealing with money, they're dealing with cash dollars with concession stand, I believe they're dealing with spreadsheets regarding inventory, that sort of thing. So, I just felt like that AA degree was important if they are dealing with those elements. Now, I think that could be another larger discussion that could be had, I don't know what the rest of the council feels, if, if that degree, because that's, that's basically what's bumping, what the justification on the, on behalf of the union is, is bumping that up. So, the, I guess the request at one point during our conversation was to remove some of those elements so that it would fit in with this current AFSMI wage scale structure. However, I didn't want to do that, so I think, I don't know if that would be a discussion point that the council would like to have. The, the job has changed tremendously from what they, what we orig- The, the, the job has changed tremendously from what they, what we originally thought they were going to be doing to what they actually are physically doing. However, I also have a question because what, what is, what is an EMT? What is like a, like, I'm just trying to think of like, what is some of our, um, that's a different union, that's LEEL, no, that's IAFF. So I'm just trying to like, if we're going to compare what they're doing, and we need to maybe change up some part of the job description, maybe we need to do that, because I'd like to look at what our other unions are paid, even LES.
Thirty dollars and sixty.
Can you repeat that?
Thirty dollars and sixty.
So I, thank you for that, Chief, I appreciate it. I just, I think it's important that we look at all of the unions, where, where these starting wages are, what the risks are, what the criteria are. I don't, do you have a wage for the EMTs?
Not in front of me, but I can tell you that I'm going to be over here at 17 dollars an hour. For an EMT, single role.
I, I, you will find no disagreement from AFSCME, that, that is an important conversation, and we believe that there are other staff who deserve raises. I, I, unfortunately, the-
I don't want to go there, Amanda.
No, I understand. I'm, you know, I don't mean to escalate blood pressure, asking you to spend more money, but I, I agree with you on that point, right? And that that's an important discussion.
And I guess where I'm coming from is, I have, you know, we sat here, it got a little escalated, it got a little heated. Part of what that, the bar that we were setting with the job description had to do with the, basically, the education requirement.
And I just want to be clear that, so in looking at the, I mean, because there's the scale to consider, right? So it's not just education, it's the amount, so there's leadership, right, in terms of acting as a team lead, there's three years of experience required, there's, I mean, there's all of these things that add to this, right? And it's a sum total, a, as we're looking at this, that, that is our concern, right? And certainly, I, I understand the, the discussions and the considerations you're making, right? Part of the scale, you know, there were significant adjustments when we made changes to insurance, right? And so some of that, there, there is a total, like, scope of bargaining that is-
Going to that, because that contract's coming up soon.
Yeah, that's how our wage scale, it, it keeps getting referenced to our wage scale, about how high our wage scale is. And if you remember the last couple contracts that we had, we did end up with a significant increase in wage because we went to a different insurance that the city recommended because it was saving the city hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It was also a lower contribution.
Okay, so this is how our wage scale ended up being where it's at, plus our 3% increase for year for year. And we negotiated that very faithfully with everybody because we're all on board with this. We all work for the city, we all want to save money for the city, you know, in return, we gave up a Cadillac insurance for something that benefited us also, but it also benefited the city.
And we also, it's not just the insurance plans that changed, right? There was a contribution change and re-significant reduction. So, I mean, so some of this is bargaining history, and you can't take it, you know, outside of that, right? I, and I, I understand the conversations that are happening, but I think if you look at the full scope of this, and not only that, but you look at what is being paid for similar positions in the private sector, part of this is about being competitive too, right? And part of this is about being able to attract quality applicants. And so I, I, I think it's important that we do not lose sight, for the reasons that Sherry referenced, for the reasons that you referenced with the points, lose sight of, you know, where the contract is at, that's what we're looking at, right? So I, I, I don't want to belabor the point, I just wanted to make that clarification with your concerns.
And I know, I mean, we sat here, all, I think we all sat here in good faith trying to figure this out. I think the, the jump is huge, and, and then kind of when I'm looking at what other public safety entities, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that it's necessarily fair to bring that up now, and we certainly didn't talk about that at the table then, but it was just a thought that I had. Go, go ahead, Scott.
But it, but it did get brought up at the meeting. If you remember, Mayor Cuffey bringing up numerous times about how the police officers are not getting paid justification for their job duties and what they require for insurance, I mean, for, um, education.
You are right. You're right.
And I will say-
It was referenced, and that was our biggest thing, was the education thing.
And I will say that one group, you know, in needing to compensate them, right, I say this as a citizen of Virginia and understanding that that can impact me directly, right, is not a justification for not compensating another group correctly, right? But I, as a citizen, as a labor rep, as somebody who believes in these kinds of negotiations, I 100% support that review, and anything that AFSCME could do to support LES and IAFF and your other groups, we will. We want to see everybody compensated fairly. I don't think that, I think the comparison that is attempting to be drawn is like, does that eat up too much budget? The, the difference is, I would say, for this position, this position, you know, and part of the conversation we had in Personnel, you know, is that essentially it has to be somewhat self-funded, right? They have to bring in business, they have to, um, address the needs of ITMEC, they have to serve customers, that's a huge portion of this position. And what we're doing, yes, is a little bit of an act of faith, but it's saying, we can bring in the business and we can justify this, right? And, and that was what Brian brought forward.
Can I just say something? Vice Mayor?
Amanda, are you done, or, okay, go ahead, Julianne.
I just want to address that point. The Iron Trail Motors Event Center is the first of its kind revenue-driven, employee-based. No other department gets to say that, possibly the parking monitor, parking meter, monitor, or, or some of the code violation issue. But I, I think that's unfair, I really do. It's unfair because none of the other depart, none of the other employees get to say, well, my wage can increase because my value of revenue is there. So, but basically what you just said is-
That's not at all what I said, Counselor.
You just said that you can justify, I heard it was justified, that we can bring in the revenue, it's revenue-driven.
That is how Sherry and Brian justified it. I never believed that an employee, especially a public employee, needs to justify their wage.
And I think we need to clarify that language, because it's not really, it's not, it's not accurate-
Right.
Because no other, other employees in other departments don't have that-
100% agreed. You heard my argument loud and clear. My argument is about the wage scale, my argument is about the qualifications in comparison with the wage scale and the points, you know, however, that's, uh, what I'm saying is that conversation was had at Personnel because there was a concern from the city about, hey, can we afford this, right? And that justification was provided by management, not by the union, but saying, like, yeah, I mean, they are, they are bringing in revenue directly, we can, you know, and if things continue to go the way that they are, then this is not an affordability question, it is a question that refer, and, and that's, I guess, what I'm trying to do, is refer you back to the contractual question.
Okay. Thank you for kind of clarifying.
I'm sorry that if I, if I hit something there, I didn't mean to.
Appreciate that, okay. And so I think, Vice Mayor, maybe we have to have a further conversation about the job description. I don't know if, if people aren't comfortable moving up to that number, maybe we do have to have that conversation.
You got to remember, job description is totally separate from the wage scale, totally separate. That has to be negotiated separately, okay?
And we, we approved, did we approve the job description as it sits?
No, we haven't yet.
We haven't done that, so, so that's what's before us, I think, then, and maybe we should talk about that, I don't know. I'm, I'm finished, and thank you for letting me talk so long.
Chief, I apologize for making you wait so long.
Thank you. First of all, I think we need to find the word negotiation, because I'm not hearing negotiation happening. I'm hearing one side, this is what we want, this is what we want, this is what we want. And Amanda, you used the word argument three or four times. So I think that this is before us. I, I'm really not comfortable with a $6 an hour jump immediately, especially because we just hired someone who's going to help coordinate stuff. I would be fine with us looking at the job description and looking. I, I've really spent time looking at this, and some of the changes are within the existing descriptions, it's just making it more specific, such as coordinates the delivery services of concession by directing staff, okay? That was changed to coordinates the delivery of concession staff by scheduling and directing staff to ensure sales projections. To me, those are clarifying languages, not a change in job description. And if that's what the challenge is, I think we need to look at that a little bit more specifically. I think our intention with changing the job description is to make sure we're getting people who can do the job and not surprised that they're supposed to be counting every day, or whatever it is. I, I think that, looking at the job description, we really may need to, you know, maybe we, there is some discussion about it. And, and, and I will point out that we have people in these positions already. We have applicants, we have people in this position. I feel that's a little bit of a scare tactic to say, well, you're never going to get anybody to hire in these jobs. No, Amanda, you've had your turn, it's my turn, thank you. That, that we have people who want to be the lead in, in the building. Problem with hiring people in general is that, that, all the excuses that we had during COVID about extra money and extra unemployment, that's all gone now. Wages have gone up across the board. People, low-income people, who were working three or four jobs just to get by because the wages were $10 an hour, now only need to work two jobs at $15 an hour. There's not a lack of jobs, we all know it's jobs, that there's not, there's not a lack of them, but in my world, where I come from, working with people with disadvantaged folks in economic hardship, they now don't have to work as much because the wages have increased. We did that on purpose in that building, to compete. So it's not about hiring qualified people because nobody wants to work, and I'm tired of that, and I know that's a little bit of my personal opinion, but the fact is, is that everybody, McDonald's, Aldi, everybody is paying more an hourly wage. Folks don't need four jobs to buy groceries for their kids anymore, they only need two jobs. So, moving forward, we need to, as a city, look at how else can we acquire the right people for the right jobs. We've got plenty of people to work evenings and weekends most of the time. We're struggling with day shifts, and, and that's a different market. So when it comes to negotiation, I don't feel that we're negotiating. Negotiating usually means, okay, we'll give a little, you give a little. We have it in front of you, you've laid your, your, your plan out three times, Amanda. You've, you've restated your stuff three times in this room today. I think that this should be tabled, and we should look at it more specifically and, and come up with a plan where we look at what's going on, take a breath, and go forward with that, with some incremental steps. Maybe when the new person is hired, gets working, the, some of the responsibilities of the lead rec aren't there anymore because we've got other people doing it. Maybe, I don't know what that looks like. And I appreciate you bringing up the, the insurance and, and all that stuff. We, yes, we did a lot, and the insurance we have, again, I will say forever, as long as I'm sitting here, that I'm blessed to have the insurance. Before getting elected, I didn't have any insurance. I've lived that life, and I'm, I'm grateful that I have the opportunity to pay for my insurance at what I pay for it, and that, that it's covered. I guess that, that's where I'm at. I, I'm, I'm not ready to move on today on supporting this job description, I'm not ready to move today on a wage increase. I think we need to go back and regroup and figure out exactly what we need and how to move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, Counselor Friedle?
Yeah, you know, I, you do make a lot of sense in, in your, but here's where, I, I guess I look at it this way, like, the, the continued reference to the established wage scale and the historical bargaining, I think we have to separate ourselves from that when we're talking about two brand-new jobs that are, that are revenue-reliant. It's unique to this scale. That's, that's how I look at it. These are brand-new jobs in a brand-new facility that are unique because they're revenue-reliant. And so we have to begin a new history of bargaining with that, in, in my opinion. But that's kind of how I look at it. So I, I'm not ready to move on this all, the, the, the one thing too, though, that we have to think about, it's only two people right now. So, I mean, the dramatic increase in expense, there's, if it's 9,000 a year, that's pretty significant, there's no doubt about that, but it's only two people. It's not a roster of heavy equipment operator, it's not a roster of utility workers, it's, I mean, there's some reasonable agreement that we can make in terms of where we want to reach this, this wage for these people, but I still think there needs to be some consideration with regard to these new positions that are being put in place, that they shouldn't be placed into the historical bargaining that's been established for this wage scale. It's unique and new to what we're trying to accomplish in the city, so that's kind of where I'm at with that. I think we're not that far apart, to be honest with you. Thank you.
I care you're finished. Anybody, anybody else? Okay, I guess what's on the agenda, uh, Maya, I'm sorry, didn't see your light, throw it up in the air.
Thank you. And, and I would agree, I think we're all kind of at that place, and it put a lot of pressure on the Personnel Committee to sit and try to make this decision. I would really appreciate having time to sit down as a council and have everybody involved in, in what we're trying to do. So I don't know, we need to make a motion to that effect, or do we just let it be and set up a meeting?
I think, Maya, we have two issues on this item that's sitting before us. The first one is to approve the proposed job description. The second one is wages, we can skip. I don't have a problem with the job description, because that's going to stay correct, Sherry. I don't see any issue with that, or Brett.
I would table it.
Table it, okay, all right, okay. I'll take our administrator's perspective here.
So you're, you're recommending-
Table it.
I'll make the motion to table this until we can all meet as a council and just-
It's been moved and supported to table, to table this. There is no discussion on a tabling motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so it's table for now. All right, where are we going next here, Brett?
Um, let's go to number 10, request to purchase 2022 Ford Utility Police Interceptors.
We're getting, we're giving you a used one from 1977.
What number, Brett?
That's probably good.
Those are probably worth a lot of money.
I had approached council, mayor and staff back in, I believe it was November, to lease a vehicle for this budget year 2022. I was graciously approved to do so. We had set funds aside, Sherry, I believe it was around $38,000 from my budget last year, because I was under budget, to do the lease. I had signed paperwork with the Minnesota Department of Administration, got the vehicle, everything lined up, and March 1st, they called Dodge canceled our order. So I inquired Ford Chevrolet Dodge whether they reopen their bidding period July this summer, that puts the build of the car to be granted on-premise in 2023, so we'll be not be getting that car, and it potentially, with all three builders, sounds like, from the rumors I've heard, Chevrolet is not doing any SUVs, potentially Dodge is not making a 2023 SUV, and Ford, I was advised by the Minnesota Department of Administration, who I was going to lease through, is at least six months out. So we have a problem. As in, to the budget, I have the 38,000 sitting from last year. I currently am at 23 people for staff, there's a couple on the books, and I am allocated 25 officers a year. So this year, I might as well guesstimate, we have interviews on Thursday to fill three spots. We will be lucky if we get two, as the individuals are still in college and have to pass their Minnesota Post Board test of the applicants we have received. So I would say the earliest start date is about August. With that being said, with the one officer position absolutely open this year, yearly wage for police officers, 63,000. wage for police officers, $63,643, so if we go six months of the year into the eighth month, I've got about $30,000 there unused, and we also had an officer resign beginning of March, and that also is going to take some time to fill that position, and the others I can't speak of, they are on the books with, obviously confidentiality reasons as to what's going on. So I graciously ask you, I attended the Minnesota Chiefs Conference last week and met up with an old DEA narcotics officer when I was on the task force, he and a couple of law enforcement buddies have started Guardian Fleet Service in Clear Lake, Minnesota, so I was asking, inquiring on vehicles, when and if we are all going to get new squads and how long it's going to take, and he had seven SUVs unspoken for that were already ordered, they are 2022 models. I included the quotes, which were kind of confusing, the new squad two bid is a little less than the squad six bid. We are going to strip our current number two out here and reuse equipment in a complete SUV package there, so there's little cost savings compared to the new build quote for number six, as I can only take out, obviously, I have a Ford truck going, and we are looking at purchasing an SUV again, so such items as the radio and our watch guard in-camera system will be taken out of the truck, put it into the SUV, but I'm going to need new cages and alternate lights, as we are planning on keeping the Ford F-150 for a reliable second backup for patrol or for officers to attend training out of the area, because as right now, they are taking a vehicle that's got over 120-some thousand miles, and we've had mechanical issues. So, there is a, compared to what I was told for bid due to the automotive industry and cost of everything rising, there is quite an, if you want to say, an increase, the squad six completely built is around $62,804, and the squad two using, like I said, some of our whatever equipment is $51,614, so that would give us a car for this year and one that I had for 2023 upcoming, so I would not need to order another car, obviously, for coming 2023, and, or to rotate, to keep on a fleet schedule, 2024 would be the next order of the vehicles. Like I said, and they also auction, squad two will be auctioned off, and how the company down there works, anything, we generally get $5,000 to $7,000 for the retired, if you want to say auctioned off, police vehicles that are completely stripped, they use that voucher for installation or equipment on there, so depending on what we get at auction for that one. However, with the lower miles of the truck, like I said, I'm planning on hanging on to it. My major concern, we have had nothing but problems with the 2020s we bought, and this, our brand-new squad blew the engine, and that was at Lundgren Ford's for four months, so we were rotating between three patrol cars, you know, 24/7, 365 days a year. If I don't order now, even in the personal industry, I was looking at cars, you are basically, if you do not find something similar or what you want that is on the lot right now, it's a year wait for a new vehicle, you basically order to spec and have to wait. So I'm asking permission, I know there's going to be, like I said, with what I saved last year over into the budget with salaries, with the positions that are not filled, I believe I will be close and can still maintain under budget this year with what we've got going on, and obviously, it would set us up with a couple of new vehicles for a two-year period from now, where I'm not going to have to worry about ordering, you know, or finding a vehicle, so we have reliable vehicles to be out in our community, safety patrolling, and getting our officers where they need to be.
Okay, so, so your ask is basically then to hold over money for '23?
That was already granted into this year.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so...
And I've probably, like I said, figuring with the personnel, I've got about $50,000 right now with the opening from the beginning of the year to, by the time we hire an individual, that's eight months with an open position.
And we have an issue there because you need to have 12 weeks of training, two people together when you hire a new officer, so...
Absolutely.
That ties up in one vehicle, two people.
Correct.
And that's required by Minnesota State.
Through our field training program, correct, correct.
Well, my personal opinion, I think you need to go out and where you can find these vehicles that are decent, order. We have to find some money in reserves or someplace to do this, we got, we've just finally starting to get a handle on public safety, because we have not downgraded our departments like other cities have, we've kept them up to snuff with, with just about 30 officers, and I don't want to see that go backwards.
I still think, like I said, even with the, if you want to stretch it to $25,000 that I wasn't budgeted for, I, I definitely can still remain under budget for this, this year.
Anybody else?
I'm supportive on this going forward, I do have one question, Chief, what is the, what's the difference now, so it's 62,800, 51,600 for squad two, squad six, what was the difference in what we approved from the original purpose or purchase?
Guardian does not lease vehicles, so these have already been ordered and purchased from their fleet, and they, you have to buy them outright, like if I was at a dealership...
So we were doing the lease before?
The lease was $911 a month for four years, 115,000 mile cap, and then that vehicle would have had to be stripped of the outfitted equipment and brought back down to the Minnesota Department of Administration Fleet Services for resale.
So for all intents and purposes, we're basically just paying upfront?
Correct.
For what you need that we had already budgeted over a four-year term?
Yep.
With the lease payment?
Correct.
So, Sherry, or do we have the funds, if she's, if she's got them kind of reserved set aside, especially with her employee?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make it.
Okay, I'd, I'd move to, move forward with the purchase of squad two and squad six with the stated amounts in our packet, squad two at $51,614.31, squad six, $62,804.66.
Support. Also Freedle, any further discussion?
So the truck experiment failed.
It is a very nice vehicle, to haul bicycles, national night-out equipment, and, yes, other large items, however, for a pursuit vehicle, we have had some lighting issues due to the design of the body on the outside, and yes, in my opinion, not a very worthy patrol vehicle in town, I'll be honest.
And that's the same feedback I've had from officers, it, it looks really nice at the recovery events, but, so I just...
We will still utilize it to the fullest of its ability.
So, and, and I appreciate you coming with this, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that our luck has not been great the last couple of years also, so very supportive of this, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, Maya?
Thank you, and I do appreciate explaining how all of the monies tie and it's all covered, it's very helpful when we have to make these decisions, so thank you for that, thank you.
Anybody else? We have a motion and a second on the floor, there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got it. Okay, now that we've moved around so much, we'll go back to four?
Back to number two, Land of the Loon event, request to use Alcott Park on Thursday, June 16th through Sunday, June 19th, and then the parade permit.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported to allow Land of the Loon to use those dates, June 16th to the 19th of 2022. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, we got a...
Number three is review the quotes for asbestos and hazardous material inspection of the public safety building area site?
To be.
Or not to be?
Yes, I'm sorry, to be, the permit, parade. I think, I read them both at the same time, I think, Council, I think, I thought it was done at the same time.
For the Land of the Loon? I missed the second part, I apologize.
Okay, you're making a motion for the second one?
Yes, I am.
Support.
Okay, any further discussion?
Parade's the best part. Parade is the best part, can't forget the parade.
Okay, so is which one we're working on?
To be.
To be, okay, for the parade. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we go to three.
Now, number three, and Mr. Sullivan.
John?
Thank you, Counselor, in your packet, we've got two proposals, one from Braun InterTech and one from NTS, and the purpose of this service is for pre-demolition hazardous building materials inspection, which is required for us for the Public Safety Center, this is for 37 residential properties between East Street South and 10th Street South on the east side of Second Avenue for the proposed Public Safety Center. We got two quotes for the building materials inspection. Just as a segue, just yesterday, Britt and I got the one for the soil borings, and we have these two companies proposing that, but we didn't have enough time to, to review and bring those forward, so at the next meeting, Britt, I believe, we'll be bringing that forward, thank you.
Next Tuesday?
Yes, so between these two proposals, staff is recommending that we, we pick the Braun InterTech proposal, and if there's any questions from the council, go ahead and let me know, and I'll do my best to answer.
I will move the Braun InterTech proposal.
To support?
Also support for discussion, so...
Okay.
Where is Braun located out of?
Hibbing.
Hibbing? And your reason for doing so is because they gave us a, a hard cost as opposed to an open-ended one?
Counselor Freedle, I discussed this with Britt, we reviewed it extensively, and, and we feel that the, the NTS proposal, although competitive at the very low end, could be as low as $55,000, it also could be as high as $129,500. That range for us, for our comfort level, was too high. If, if, if NTS sent us a bill for $129,500, we would have to pay it based on the contract language. Braun's was very specific, it gave us an exact dollar amount per house, that ended up being $72,340 or $1950 a house. We know exactly what our liability is with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, Julian?
John, what did we budget for demo, this is demo, this is mitigation, what, what had we put in the budget for that?
This was in, in the overall budget for demo and permitting and environmental of 2.9 million, so this falls under that umbrella?
Did you piece it out so that you kind of had an understanding of where we should be with this mitigation inspection services?
Yes, I think, I believe we had originally budgeted on a line item basis, and Britt, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this was $100,000 is what we had originally?
We're, we're doing good with what has come in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
And this is just to see what we need to do with the abatement of everything, this is the, this is going to give us the bigger bill, basically, right?
And once we get this information, that's when we can seek grants.
Okay, thank you.
Because we know what the, the abatement would be.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And this is also a step that USDA requires, we don't, we have to have this as part of that application as well.
Julian?
Sorry, one other follow-up, John and Britt, once this is determined, whatever the contaminants are within that soil, the city can apply for a brownfield permit, is that correct? If, if it's determined that...
Soil borings, I keep talking about everything next week, the initial 24, then we can apply to whatever MPCA program we're eligible, they have a petroleum fund, they have a dry cleaner fund, you can apply to any of those pots, once we know what we're dealing with.
My, and so my question or concern would be, is that going to give us enough time to stay within our time parameter for demo, and, I mean, is it, what is their grant cycle and award cycle?
It should, it really should, the, what we know of the contamination is the majority of it's along staver foundry area, which is not in the building area, so we just need these rest of these soil borings to confirm what we think we know, the majority of it's going to be off to the side, which will be a longer cleaning process, it'll take us a little while to get that done.
But if you're not, and if you're not building on it, isn't there a different type of mitigation if you're actually not building on them?
Exactly, exactly, and I think that's why Wald is suggesting we go closest to Eighth Street, because of those initial preliminary soil borings we did, were the cleanest area up that way, and then the rest was the worst, closer you got to the highway and stavers, it was worse.
So you're basically both on track to say, let's apply to whatever we need to when we find out whatever information, and, and we'll go on from there?
Absolutely, absolutely, yep, thank you.
We didn't, we didn't get a second on this motion, we have the original motion to go with Braun InterTech, but we didn't get a second according to...
Gary approved, Gary seconded it with, for discussion.
Steve made the motion, okay, I missed that, so apologize, apologize. Now, this is just, John, correct if I'm right, this is just for soils, it's not for the buildings themselves inside, is it, this bid?
This one's for the houses.
This one is for the houses.
This is the houses.
Inside, seeing what kind of asbestos and all the other garbage you've got?
That's correct.
So, so the staver area is separate?
That's, that's the resolution that John's going to be bringing to the council meeting?
Next week?
Yep, we need to go through, we just got the soil borings yesterday, the two quotes yesterday.
I would suggest that, John, that you go back, that property of stavers was supposed to be free and clear from the county to back, you need to go back and look at that information, because I don't think we need to do any more.
Have those minutes.
We need to move more testing.
We need more, we need 24 more soil borings. And it's not, not just in the staver area, throughout the whole project area, because now that we've picked up more parcels, we have to do most, more soil borings.
Although that staver, whole property was clean.
It's not clean, we know that area has a known contaminant.
So do we have a record of what the contaminants are?
That's what we're working on.
The county should have those, because they ran all the tests. All right, enough said. Okay, any more discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Item number four is approve the request from Rev. Virginia to hold the Food Truck Festival on September 17th, 2022.
It moved, support?
Part.
Support by Counselor, yeah, I'm just moved by Counselor Freedle, is there any discussion on that item, number four? Julian?
Thank you, one question I do have, is there a reason that it's only one date that they're requesting this year and not three, and were there any, was there any feedback given as to why not three?
We didn't want to compete with Land of the Loon, so we did send out a letter to all the vendors encouraging them to contact Land of the Loon and go to that festival, and then for the, we did mention the parade is expected to be on this date, if you want to come, please contact us and we'll work out. Majority of our vendors that don't have a year-long city license cannot come because of the cold weather, but those that came last year were the ones that had the year-long city license, so we expect that they'll be there.
Okay, so it's, because didn't, we had three last year, one at the beginning of the summer?
It was Land of the Loon weekend, because Land of the Loon wasn't going on, we tried to do something to get people back in town on that weekend.
And then anything in mid, midsummer?
Just the September, we're really, and we're working on actually doing a bingo with the Elks that same day, and then doing something with the Lyric Center, some kind of music out in the street at the same time, so we're really trying to make it one big, really big day.
We do stuff too, don't we, Britt, with the Dream Machines?
Yes, the Dream Machines will be there in August.
Do food then?
So it, I think that just brings a lot of people into the community, so I'm, I'm happy to support this, obviously, but I would be even happier to have two dates on there at least, so...
Let Rev. know, but...
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we need to go...
Item number five is approve the request to purchase spare light standards for Chestnut Street and Fifth Avenue, we are out, I believe, and they do need to replace one on Chestnut Street that got cracked in an accident.
Are those...
So moved.
Are those about $50,000 apiece?
Twenty, they're $8,850 for Fifth Avenue and $9,850 for Chestnut Street.
All right. Who made the motion to...
I did.
All support for suggestion.
Be supported by Counselor.
Discussion.
Freedle. Okay, further discussion? Counselor Freedle?
That's capital outlay money that we have available and budgeted?
It's budgeted.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
I just have a question that's related to those. I've noticed some of the lights on Fifth Avenue are blue. They're, and all the lights don't match. Is that what we're moving to, or is that just what we have?
We're moving to LEDs.
All the same color, yep.
Eventually will be the blue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now let's see where we got to go here.
The final item is a discussed property offer for parcel in Public Safety Development Area 108 East Street South, and this portion of the meeting may be closed as per Minnesota statute 13D05.
We do eight. The, approve the single role paramedic?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. All this jumping around made me look, we do have a resolution to approve the hiring of a single role paramedic. I sent out an email previously. We had applications. We had interviews last week. We have one single role that we want to bring forward at this time, Amanda Menuway for approval of hiring.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, so moved and supported to make the one resolution for hiring the single role paramedic. And Britt, you'll fill in the name. I missed the name.
Amanda Menuway.
Okay. Right. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we got the last thing.
Take this one. Item number seven, discussed property offer for parcel in Public Safety Development Area 108 Eighth Street South. This is for the Koneman parcel. We had an appraisal and a review appraisal, and we have a purchase agreement proposed, and it's good to go. It's been vetted and we're ready. So I don't really see a need to close the meeting or anything like that. So if you have any other questions, let me know.
Also move for approval. Support.
It's removed and supported to purchase a piece of property at, what is it, 108 Eighth Street South for the Public Safety segment of improvement. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't see anything else on the agenda. We don't have other items on this agenda, so better stick to the agenda then. Ryan, we're going to get you out of here in time.
Hi, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Whatever happened with the issue of the snow being dumped by the lake, by Bailey's Lake?
Sure, they went over there.
And the repair of the fence?
I don't know if he done one of the frosts.
The frost is still in, so they can, they can't repair it right now.
But the bill would be sent to the...
Property owner.
Property owner. Okay. And are we concerned at all with what's going into the water, since that was all off the parking lot?
Yes, but we aren't going to test the water. That's not what we're going to go to.
Okay, thank you.
That was April 13th that I confirmed with Jim. Make sure you keep track of all your time. Fence needs to be repaired, and then remove the snow.
Okay, anything else? Anybody has, Britt? Anything else we missed? Chief?
Mayor, I just want to have it on record that I've requested that the city attorney and city administrator address the pending litigation and remind the other parties to not approach city counselors. I was accosted this morning, and I feel I was accosted, and so I just want that put on the record, that they will be drafting some kind of communication, reminding the other party to not communicate with us directly. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anybody's got? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned. Okay, thank you, everybody. We spent our two-plus hours here.